I'd like to call the Harper Creek Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, November 10th, 2025 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Here.
Mrs. Waterston?
Here.
Mrs. Reisner is absent. Mrs. Wallace?
Here.
I am present. Mr. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Best?
I am present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you for that. And it's my understanding we have no modifications to the agenda?
There are no modifications to the agenda.
All right, move on to Communications, President's remarks. Good evening. I'd like to welcome all those attending tonight in the audience and on YouTube. I hope everybody has enjoyed our fall sports and also the fall play, which was?
Murder on the Orient Express.
Murder on the Orient Express. Harper Creek winter sports are preparing for their seasons. There are more opportunities to engage with the schools. This Wednesday, November 12th, a Community Conversations meeting will take place at Beadle Lake Elementary, beginning at 5:30 with Mr. Ridgeway. And the holidays are right around the corner. We wish you, your family, a happy and wonderful Thanksgiving. And with that, we'll pass it on to Mr. Ridgeway and Administration.
All right, a couple of things over the weekend. So sport-wise, well, let's start with the play. Just Bo mentioned the play. I thought it was very good. Had really nice attendance, especially on opening night. It was murder on the Orient Express. Beyond, you know, the kids did a really nice job. I think it was presented well. Mr. Maynor, tech director, ensured all kids were mic'd up so you could hear really well. That's a key thing within a play, especially in high school, so voices don't travel as well as others. So great job with the play. We had volleyball districts finals on Saturday. We ended up winning that. They play tomorrow against Tecumseh at Sherlot at 7:00. And then our girls swim and dive team played the league championship here at Harper Creek. And it was found out that they had not won this since 1983, so 42 years later. And they ended up winning. I don't have the scores perfectly memorized, but it was something like, we had 500 points, second place was about 280 or 300 points, somewhere in that neighborhood. So we won pretty good going away. Really nice day. We have a lot of good girls swimmers that are young and a lot that are coming, so I think the program looks like it's in a really good shot. And that was a clean sweep. So all of our fall girls' sports won the league championship across the board. So we talked about that a little bit in our last meeting, so that's a pretty big deal. Bo mentioned the Beadle Lake Community Conversation. I had one at Sonoma, nice Wednesday. I have another one at Waddles Park the next Wednesday. And we are just gaining feedback on a potential facilities project, obviously. It was good information. Wasn't a huge turnout, but it was good information. Harper Creek Optimist Parade, big Battle Creek event, November 22nd on a Saturday. So if you go to that, plan on that, get there early. It's hard to get parking, hard to get a space to stand nowadays. But downtown Battle Creek is full, and it really is a nice event. And as you know, the Optimist Club here in Harper Creek, they're very big supporters of us as a school district. Thanksgiving break is a little different this year. We have Wednesday through Friday off for kids. So that's a touch different. We used to have half a day Wednesday and then into Thanksgiving, so it's a full day off, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then one final thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can do this differently, but the AP Lit class is going to go to the Shakespeare Theater in Chicago. And I believe at our, last year when we were talking about these, these regular events that occur, you are okay if I approve them, but just notify the board. And they're going to the theater on December 3rd. It's kind of a, all day, they're taking charter bus, or a charter bus, 8:00 AM and get back at 8:30 PM. But it's a typical event. They're going to see Much Ado About Nothing is the play that they're going to see this year. Anybody have a problem with that? Let me know. If not, I'll continue that process. If it's a out-of-country, week-long event, we'll bring it to the board. Or I'll even say it differently. If it's one of those four or five-day events, like the choir, the band takes, we'll bring those to the board, obviously. But the ones that are regular, one-day events that are not overnight, I'll just let you know. And I believe that's all of my communications.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any communications?
Not tonight.
All right, thank you. Presentations, multilingual presentation. Karen Strombeck, please.
So Karen's coming up. Karen is our EL teacher slash coordinator of all things supporting students who are multilingual. Formerly, it's been changed, English Language Learners, the title changes, but there are different funds that support, partially support the work. And so, as you know, annually I have her come and just share kind of an update. So without further ado, Karen.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Um, do we have the PowerPoint or not?
Yes, if you go to my report, under Celebrate Student Success, it's under Multilingual Learners.
So I'm Karen Strombeck. So I'm, yeah, the ESL teacher here, also slash WEADA coordinator. I'm part of a two-person team. Jamie Whitmore is the other person. She's one of our Grow Your Own teachers as well. And she will be leaving me in December to become a student teacher at the middle school, which we're so excited about. But there is a job posting as of today. So, but Jamie is incredible.
Try now.
There we are. All right, you can go ahead and go to slide two. So, yep, we use the term multilingual learners. We use that term statewide. It just has more of a growth mindset than limited English proficiency or English language learner. So we've transitioned over to ML, multilingual learner. Our students are identified through the Home Language Survey, which is done during registration. And then we screen them, if they qualify, to find out how much support they need. And usually that's a phone call with families, too. So we do have new legislation that just came out recently. So we've always worked under the federal laws, which state that all students deserve meaningful and equal access to educational programs. Michigan recently passed new requirements for our English Language Development instruction models. And so basically what that looks like now is that we have specific times required for leveled, each level of student, as well as having certified staff. So we have, this takes place this year, but we're working on a four-year plan, which is basically what all schools are doing right now in order to meet the requirements from the new legislation. And so we're starting that process. That four-year plan has to be finalized by January. I found that out today. So we'll submit that in January. And that will kind of be in conjunction with this new person we're hiring to look towards them getting certified, so that we have two people with that certification, or at least working towards that certification.
Yeah, right now we're meeting their needs with a certified staff and a para educator. The para educator, who is amazing, is also in your Grow Your Own. So she's transitioning into her internship, so.
Yep. So, I mean, this legislation's going to be really, it's going to be great for students. We already have set times that we do for students, but this is going to be then a statewide requirement. So it's, yeah, it'll be great for students. And it'll be great for us. So go ahead and go to the next one. So this is Harper Creek at a glance. We have students, some students were born here in the US, some were born in other countries. We have a variety of languages present in our schools. Being a school district, we have about 26 kids, but we have a variety of languages present. So some of them may be less familiar ones. A lot of those are languages from India. They have a variety of languages there. So go ahead. So part of my job is to test English proficiency. This takes place in February, March each year. It's called the WEADA. And it tests in those four areas, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. It's not just like, read this text. It's usually done more in academic context. So it might have like a science experiment, and they have to read the findings from the science experiment, and then either speak about it, or maybe they're listening to a passage about a math lesson, and then they have to answer questions about it.
So this is her presentation. Ma'am, I'll lift her up because I did her observation today, and she's doing a great job integrating all four, speaking, listening, reading, and writing, so.
It's a lot of fun. I really enjoy working with our students. So this is us at a glance. Most of our kids are in Level 3 and 4. I'll talk more about this later, but we just had a huge growth this past year with our WEADA scores. And so I'm really proud of our students. And that's a big reflection of the work that Jamie and I are doing, but even larger, our classroom teachers. Our classroom teachers are amazing, helping make sure that we get accommodations and modifications done that, of students that need them, and really just supporting those four areas, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. So students test out at 4.8. And we have, we have a handful of kids that are just like point one away from testing out, so I'm always hopeful that this year will be the year. All right, so, yep, we work with our students across grade levels, DK, all the way up through 12th grade. Five different buildings. We're meeting with them weekly or bi-weekly. Some of that will change as this four-year plan happens. There will be an increase in some of those, for some of those students. And also just making sure that students are with, like, we have some teachers that also have certification, and so placing students strategically, placing them together, so that we can best meet their needs. Another big piece is collaborating with other districts. We're part of a consortium now, which has been really exciting this year. I'm really excited about, we've met once as a consortium. It's like four counties worth of people. And it's a lot of schools that are very similar to ours, right? Low incidence, 26-ish kids over five buildings. So we're going to be able to do a lot of problem solving, especially with this new legislation. So I'm really excited to work alongside of them. And then we also have an EL consultant through the state, through that consortium. So I have somebody at like the tip of a phone number, say, hey, this is happening. What do I do now? Which has been great, so. Another piece of my work and Jamie's work is making sure that parents and families have what they need to be involved in school. This looks like having interpreters at conferences when needed. We have in-person interpreters. We also have phone interpreters as well, where like you can dial a number and have somebody in any language in like two minutes, which is great. Our school district pays for that, thank you, for the families that need it. Another piece of that is Michelle Burkhardt, our data person, has now integrated that into our registration. And so now parents are able to answer those questions for me during registration. Granted, sometimes I'm still making those calls to check in, but that kind of eliminates some of those steps to say, okay, this family wants this from the get-go. And then translation of like the word. So we've been doing, we have a handful of families that need interpretation of actual documents. So again, that looks like I have a visual menu that I print out for a family, so that they can see some of the food offerings that we have, because shepherd's pie is not something that's maybe eaten everywhere, or lasagna, or... So we do a visual menu each month for a family. We do translation of PTA, invites for Harvest Fest, anything that kind of comes through. And the other piece of that is, we have a lot coming in digitally now, right? So we've got our Samor newsletters and things through Blooms. Blooms translates everything for us, which is great. And so now I'm working with principals and secretaries. So as we use Samor, Samor translates, which is great, which is our newsletter thing. But within that, like, if somebody has a graphic, like those little translator pictures up there, if I translated that page right now, all of the words I typed in would translate to another language. But those little tiny graphics are like little tiny jail cells, and they hold everything in them. And so no software can break through that. And so if you notice from Carla's, Carla's, from the Lodge newsletter, she'll just have like two little sentences underneath those graphics. So we're hoping to see that more and more. And that's going to help families be able to translate those documents fully and get all the information they need. And that goes alongside to working with Rebecca Schneider, our communications person, because that also is ADA compliance, too, right? So if someone has a visual impairment, they're able to have the document read fully and not just have like graphic inserted here, or something like that. So, yeah. Go ahead, sorry. That was a lot of that one. Celebrations, okay. So we had a really big growth this year. We had 11 students move up an entire level. Whether it be Level 2 to 3, 3 to 4. Really, really, really proud of our growth that we made this year. We had two students exit the program. And like I said, we have these other kids that are just like point one away from testing out, so we were really excited to see that. That's a picture of Jamie and I up there in the corner. We love spending the Title III grant money, and we buy books and games and activities for our kids. So we gave out over 200 things for the summer. And that's for our kids to use over the summer, whether that be if they're traveling, some of them travel home or to another country, they're staying here at home, they're doing our summer programming here, but we're giving them activities and things to use at home. So. And again, I can't say enough about having two people. It's been a world of difference from when I first started. We're really able to help provide adequate support alongside our incredible classroom teachers. Like, we could not do what we do without them. And sometimes we come with big asks to them, like, hey, like, about this. And our classroom teachers are amazing, making sure that kids have what they need. So what questions might you have?
How many total students do you have in the program, again?
Um, well, they might change this week, because I'm screening three new kids. Right now it's 25.
And are you, you're going to each building like daily, or are you rotate between?
So we rotate. So I'm like, I'm at Waddles three days a week, at the high school every day. It just kind of depends on where, yeah.
It's a set schedule, but it's, yeah.
And do you have more students in elementary than middle school and high school, or is it just kind of mixed?
It's about even right now, yeah. It's about even right now. And again, it fluctuates every year, and that's why it's tricky, because when, as they move up with leveled, like, they require different amounts of support. And we see that in the legislation, too, like the hour requirements for Level 1 and 2s is different than 3s and 4s. So it's, it, yeah.
How many languages do you know?
One. I know bits and pieces of a lot of them, but I know one fully, so, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thank you. All right, we are going to table the MASB conference recap until next month, if that is all right with everybody, and move on to District Updates, Curriculum, and Mrs. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening again.
So I yielded most of my time to Karen, but there are a couple of things I'd like to highlight. As you know, we've been working diligently over the last eight years to have a viable, consistent, evidence-based curriculum. And part of what we've done over the last couple of years is pulling people in from the organizations that know that, so like Amplify, Mid School Math, Bridges, that know it like the back of their hand. And so this fall, there's some pictures there. We had Bridges was here, Janice, who knows Bridges, was here. And she comes alongside our local instructional coaches and our principals. And they all have tools, like implementation tools, fidelity, like what would it look like? So I call this like a process rubric for Bridges. And so we ask our teachers to self-reflect, like, where do you think you are with this? And then we have that outside and inside resource to calibrate. And then they set a goal on what they want to do to get better with implementation. So it's, it's been amazing to see the growth and hear the consultants come in and just talk about how hard our teachers are working to make sure they're adding all the pieces. We invest so much in curriculum, and the challenge is if we're not implementing it correctly, then that kind of deludes the whole evidence base. So that journey is about, what does that look like? What do the pieces look like? And, you know, the exciting part is, is, you know, I'm huge with restorative practices. It's not done to our teachers, it's done with our teachers, and they're begging, like, when is she coming back? And that's the culture that we want to continue to have, so that we can have, well, no, we've arrived, if you will, when 80% are successful on assessments. It's an MTSS, and right now we're not there yet. We're moving in the right trajectory, but it's just exciting. So that's one piece. Mr. Ridgeway did mention, this past Tuesday, if you happen to drive by, it, there wasn't a piece of grass, I don't think that didn't have a car on it. We had over 1,000 people at our countywide professional development. And that, we had been planning for a year. It was a superintendent's idea, I don't know, two or three years ago, and then we brought it to fruition. And I, it was better than anything I imagined. I mean, we carefully planned, but I just want to lift up food service, technology, facilities, the instructional piece. It, I believe in our family, but they hit it out of the park, every single leader of that department. And I kind of joked, because it was local teachers and administrators presenting, and then we had some outside people also. And they loved the food, they loved the place. I said, yeah, it's our recruitment strategy. So I don't know if we'll be able to host again, but it was magical, just magical. And the thought that I may have left before it, I'm just glad I was able to be here. So I think that's the main thing. Cognitive coaching, you know, is a main artery, as we work to empower restorative practices, cognitive coaching, adaptive schools. And so I'm moving into days 5, 6, 7, and 8. So November will be 5 and 6, and December 7 and 8. And that's also magical, because I thought it was being duped, because all the middle school people signed up last session. I'm like, what's happening here? But people take this transformation, and they really understand that coaching is not something you do to somebody. It's something that you come alongside people, and they have these skills. So that's been also a beautiful learning that we've been able to do. So I did link several things in here. There's Jimmy Cassus, if you want to see his webpage. WCK did an interview, so that's an audio podcast. So you probably looked at all that, but that's, that's what we have. And I'm just so proud of just everything our teachers and administrators and departments are doing. Did you have any questions when you read the report?
No, the podcast was really good. I had a chance to listen to it. It was in the middle of the night, but you did a great job.
It what?
It was in the middle of the night, but I didn't.
Oh, when you listened to it? Oh, well, that probably sounded better. You're probably half asleep. Was it a snoozer? Oh, anyways. All right, well, that's what I have.
Bikino was pretty good.
Phenomenal.
I had several people call me and say, what's going on in Harper Creek with all the cars? And then it was,
yeah. Thought we communicated, but you know, there's always that little smidgen for growth.
So we thought there were 1,100 educators? Is that right?
That was 1,064 is who were registered. We fed 1,100. Well, you know, I'm just, I like to be specific.
Right on the number.
Are there plans to have like an annual?
Yes. So we set, we set dates. The one change, though, is most of the schools said they didn't like Tuesday. This is before we did it. And so the superintendents just said, yeah, it's going to be on Friday instead of a Tuesday. That's the difference.
I like that.
And then when they negotiate, we negotiate the calendar, it's already in the next year calendar.
We don't know if we'll host.
Tuesday was a one.
I say, that's my question. I mean, when you do it the right way, I would think that people would want to come back rather than...
They do, but we have some.
There's a process, so.
Like to also host a show off.
Maybe the Spartans might be interested.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, the bar's pretty high, so good luck, party. I mean, you know, I will be there as a guest of some sort, just to see.
If nothing further from Mrs. Williams, move on to Mr. Robinson of Facilities. Good evening.
Good evening. I submitted a report. There wasn't a ton on it. We are very busy, but a few highlights. We are still working with the township on the, with the Emmett Township on the rental house. They have been doing some drills, and we, some of you were, I believe it was a junior varsity football game a couple of weeks ago. And we got a lot of phone calls, because they were doing a drill.
Oh, there's 20 fire trucks there.
Yeah. They're all in the north parking lot. And so everybody was like, what's going on? But they use it for, they've used it twice now for doing some drills and things of that sort. Rob spoke about the 2026 possible bond, community connections meetings we're doing. I'm part of helping with that where I can. And then also the weight room project.
I do have pictures, so may I review this for Robinson?
That's okay. I meant to remind you earlier that I...
No, I have them all up here. So I don't have every single one, but we're going to start with the very beginning and then move on, so.
But anyway, so kudos to Melissa Feesel and her group. They did an amazing job just fundraising. And actually, we're not going there yet, but I think they're close to order, well, final four pieces of this whole project. So that's the floor where they were taking, where they were taking out. It actually was a lot harder than anybody ever anticipated coming out, but they got it out. The new flooring is a little bit thinner, but you can see the logos. So in the past, those of you that may have remembered the weight room, there was some wooden platforms at each of the, and I wished I'd taken a picture of them, at each of the way, the lifting stations, which now you don't have those anymore, so it eliminated that safety hazard. It was a big safety hazard, and some of the colleges, they've, they've made some rules about those now.
I just keep putting pictures of those on.
Yeah, and so there's just more of the flooring. That's what it looked like empty. The room is huge. It looks huge when it's empty. But then when we filled it with full equipment, it got really, really... Logos. They came out amazing. The floor people did, actually, everybody did a great job. When you see the equipment, it'll really, there's some of it there with some of the Beaver logos and whatnot on it. Those are all on, also there's all, so we have those on both walls, the east and west walls. Came out really nice. Like I said, Melissa Feesel.
It's a little bit closer up. I didn't do the pictures of the, what do you call it?
I don't know if I remember those. So that piece of equipment right there, there's one of those right now in the center of the weight room. There'll be four more of those double racks throughout this, throughout the room.
So they all say Harper Creek Beavers. I've replayed the same logo.
Yeah, it's done right. And they should be, the district should be, I mean, the community, our athletes should really be happy with what they've got, be very proud of the work.
That's another rack along the wall. The room is really big. Really big. And we've already ordered, or hesitating on the order?
I think she's holding, she's a little shy on funding still.
But close. I told her, I think we're going to, we're going to move forward with the order, because we're within like, I think, 20,000 of the total total, so it's close.
And the old equipment.
And it's less than the total that we thought it was going to be, so it's a little bit, it's much less than the total.
The old equipment is going to be used. Actually, we're moving it out Wednesday morning. Athens has bought, has bought and purchased the equipment, so we're going to have that. We're going to come up Wednesday and pick that up, get it up.
Since it's sitting on our indoor track.
It's sitting in the indoor track, right outside the elevator. It's a little bit everywhere right now.
So I'm going to just come back through and turn them on?
But that's really, that was the, kind of the highlight, you know, for just, but like I said, kudos to Melissa.
You see how big the room is? I think you can see the blue in the corner, that is the turf, there's some turf in there that you can, lots of things. You can practice running on it, and you can...
They do a lot of push work, sled work.
Sleds, like football. They do it for other sports now. Certainly not for football, 100%. If we're going to be good in athletics, like top end athletics, you got to have kids lifting all the time, working on, in every sport, in every gym. Anything else, Jim, for you?
That's all I've got.
Did we ever get any of the filter first funding that we were supposed to get by the?
We did.
I just did a drawdown last week, actually.
Great. So they actually promised it and delivered, huh?
We got a lot at 80.
We got 80, and I think we've only spent 20.
20, but I, well, I just spent about 40 more.
He's working on it, yeah.
So, but, so, not the drinking filler stations, right? We're getting ready to put all of them in the, in the elementaries here. Probably start here the next couple of weeks, getting them all in. Then we'll have some to do still at high school, middle school. And then filtering all of the other faucets is another major task.
All right, thank you. Finance, Mrs. Obermeyer, good evening.
Hello. My board reports are my normal board reports. We've had a lot of changes. That's the original budget versus what's actually happened. I can't remember if we knew last meeting that we would get our state aid payment, but we got it, so that's exciting.
Always good.
We made payroll. We made payroll. No, so I, a lot of my stuff is going to be later on in the meeting count and food service, but that, I just wanted to say everything looks on track. The second report is the cash report. We did make thirty, thirty-eight thousand in interest. We opened five CDs. Between My Laugh and the CDs, we're getting, we get an interest rate, so that's exciting.
CDs, My Laugh. You can see the differences. It was interesting that the interest earned, so last month to this month, we've gotten quite a bit in interest. With the CDs kicking.
The CDs kicked in, yeah. And then.
And the biggest thing on, you know, this cash balance is, you know, we have cash, which is good. A little excess in food service, but.
We'll be talking about that later. And then, of course, the checks. And then at the budget committee, we go through the detailed of the.
Yep. So board members, if you ever want to go through all the checks for the month, you know, right here, you can kind of, you can go through and take a look at all of them.
And that's really what I have right now. We're working on, actively working on budget. I'm hoping.
What do you think revision is gonna happen?
It'll probably be January. I'll be able to give you guys a good number in December, but to be more accurate, it will be January. If that's all right with you. I mean, you tell me when, but January.
As soon as possible.
I can tell you stuff in December.
All right, thank you. Mr. Maynard, good evening.
I didn't have a lot going on this month. I had a shout out to the other district staff departments that came to help us on November fourth. There was approximately twenty techs there. So it's probably not the best tech to staff ratio you'll ever find. It helped me today really smoothly. And we didn't do ticket volume. We're just running behind. I've got tickets closed right now, but that's something we're working on. Best for last is the county installed all the cameras at the elementary schools. Told us they have extra money left over. They want to spend it. We want to take it. So they asked us to come up with a prioritized list. So I've talked to the elementary principals because that's where the eligible schools were, asked them to come up with a prioritized list because we don't know how much money they have, how many ways they're dividing it. It was a countywide project. So we're gonna give them a nice list. Hopefully they'll come back and give us more cameras and install them and do the whole works.
How much we talking about?
I don't know. I, I thought I heard a rumor that it was maybe in the high five digits, what they have available, but we're just one of the schools. They worked, we were the biggest recipient of that grant. I don't know if we had the biggest service too, but.
Didn't we identify at first, like, three more cameras we had to have?
Yes, and here's some in each elementary. And then there's some still in Wildes Park Playground, Sonoma Cafeteria. We knew those areas. We did do a beetle. We installed already. So we're hoping to find more areas. Like when they put the new ones in, sometimes they didn't give us the same coverage we had on the old system. They gave us really nice crisp video and even a few new ones, but they left stuff off, like the cafeteria. It's kind of important. I mean, I had a camera there before.
Are they all interior cameras or there's exterior cameras as well?
We got new both.
Okay.
So I know we're gonna ask for both because like the playground at Wildes Park, the view they have is from a different corner of the building, so it's not as good as what we used to have. So hoping they'll put one at this side too. That's one of our top priorities, actually.
I mean, the cameras are really good quality, so. Remember in the old days, you couldn't even see the, who the chat was. There's a blot. We're coming across the screen. Now you can, yeah.
There's Johnny.
Or the adult.
All right. If no further questions for Mr. Maynard, move on to public comment related to agenda items. All right, no public comment. Move on to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, and it looks like we have some closed session meeting minutes.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school services fund checks, food service, and student and school activity fund checks in accordance with the list discussed, and approve the following minutes as reviewed. September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, joint Board of Education meeting minutes. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting minutes. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular Board of Education meeting minutes. October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Policy Committee meeting minutes. And November sixth, twenty twenty-five, Budget Committee meeting minutes.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All right, does anybody need more time to read the closed session meeting minutes? All right, if not, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you for that. And move on to information discussion, school safety. Mr. Ridgeway.
Okay, a regular agenda item on safety. We ended up meeting at Sonoma this month, actually today. The first part was we basically said what questions, concerns, things about safety, specifically at Sonoma Elementary, do you have? Now, I'm not gonna go into specific detail because, you know, there's definitely a safety portion of this. But generally speaking, most of the things that had came up were all about how the Technology Department and the Facilities Department can look into some items to make sure everything is running properly, so everything is, 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 is going like it should. I know the Raptor system currently, which is the visitor management system, it's set up for the secretary, but we need to set it up for a couple more people in case the secretary's not, not there. So that was something that, that is gonna happen in, in the immediacy. We're gonna work hard on getting more staff signed up for the rave panic alert on their, on their cell phone. Now that we've used it for a year, we can really see the advantages. And so Jim and I are gonna make an effort to get that number higher than it is currently. They talked, their pickup and drop off is going well at Sonoma, so that's good news because typically we don't hear that at schools, so that's great. There was a item for the facility assessment information. So the new tower that was put at Sonoma, there is not a fence between the, it's really the track, the playground area, and this tower. And so we think that we, we should put a fence there. And then the fence isn't, it doesn't go the entire way in front of the parking lot. So basically enclosing the playground is something we want to do.
There is a fence around the actual tower though, correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
We just want to keep, well, we want to make sure kids don't go into the woods. Now that there's a pathway there, it's, it's an invitation for kids to, oh, well, Scott, Bo's back and get curious and go off, and then you can't see him.
That, I believe that fence has some wire across the top of it too, so I see we want some kids.
Another key fob at the east side of the building, we had discussion about that. AEDs, our cardiac team met last month, and we identified we need one more AED at Sonoma. We pretty much aren't good as a district, but that's one spot we need. And then they're going to do their cardiac drill that is required by law soon. And then just there's some concerns, now that we're starting youth seasons and people are using the gyms in the winter, like the, we use the Sonoma, the Beetle Lake, as well as the Wildes Park Gym. And just making sure that our safety continues throughout the evening, you know, when, when the buildings are, there's not really anybody there. I did ask, this is outside of Sonoma Elementary, about events in the winter. And we were told that at Friday night, large events that will have two SR officers, and if we happen to be playing a rival, they'll have three SR officers at each event. So I was pretty happy with that, without us asking, so that's good. And then the last thing that was brought up was universal signage. Because when first responders come to the school, they're gonna come to a number, not a name, of the room. And so we need to make sure that our teachers are familiar with the number of their room when they call nine one one. That was just a small thing, but it could be a big thing in, in either.
Only thing I'd add is Chief Mackey, or one of our former SROs, has been attending here as of recent, which is good to see him there.
Yeah, we had a full room today, for sure.
All right, if no questions for Mr. Ridgeway, move on to strategic plan update.
This is gonna be really quick. If I'm gonna be fully transparent, the biggest, my time has been focused on the facility feedback for the potential bond, spending time with staff to start with, and then now with community members. A little disappointed in the, the total number that came to the first community connection. Was really happy about the, the senior meeting. That seemed to have a really good turnout, so I was happy about that. But because the numbers of community were a little bit less, we are going to do a survey, and we're in process of completing that. And that survey will, I'm hoping out next week, and at least be live for two or three weeks, so we can have that data as well when, when the Steering Committee gets together to say, here, here's what we think the priorities are. And we've continued to narrow the list down. We feel pretty good about it. But we want to make sure we hear from everybody and not just some people, or as many as we possibly can. There obviously, not obviously, but there is meetings coming up next week and then the following week at Waddles that are scheduled. And then the bond steering committee will get together in December to take all of the information, including the survey information, and start really formulating what this will look like. I've gotten a really positive response on the way that we presented it. I know that this board, myself, we've talked a lot about some of those items that came up that were roadblocks last time. And so not just coming up with answers, but, but, you know, here's the facts. Here, you know, here's the reason why. And it seems to be going over really well as it's being presented to, you know, people outside of the school especially. And then we've asked our school staff, you know, we really need for you to, not necessarily be supportive, that's not the word I want to use. We want them to be able to answer questions if they, if people ask questions of them and not shake, shy, shy away. Well, why do we need space? Or why do we need this or that? That they can step up and, and talk about the reasons why.
I'm curious, Sarah, you were at the Community Connections luncheon. What was the feedback that you heard from, from people in regards to?
I mean, I felt like it was really positive and it was, it was nice. I mean, there's probably three times more people than anyone I've been to so far, so. And people asked questions and we had some younger crowd there too.
Yeah.
That were there that had questions and I felt like it was a really positive response.
And Rob, in between that and the first one at Sonoma, what's, what do you think the, the feedback has been? Do you think it's been positive or not?
Oh, yeah, for sure. I asked, especially at the end of Sonoma's, you know, how, because it was a small group. Well, how did you feel? And they had a lot of good ideas, you know, one of them, and I'm saying it publicly, so I'll probably have to do it now, is you need to do, you need to do the same thing, maybe without people around, record it, like record walking around the school and showing the people the why.
Yeah.
And then talking about the why, because I think the explanations are so much better now than they were last time. Like we, we have a lot, a better story to tell.
I'm like showing the map, the old, how you put in the hallways. I can't remember.
Yeah, and so.
That was very.
Right. And so when we went to actually Sonoma, I could say, look, this block of room, this block of area was six classrooms that were wide open. Now we have three, three classrooms, a hallway, and we built all these offices.
I still can't believe that was a thing.
And so we went from six to four classrooms in this area. This area was very similar. I just would go down the whole pathway like that.
You know, to be, to be honest, I don't know that I knew that when we did the last bond proposal. So I think that really, if, if we can push that out, I think it's gonna help people understand why we need more space.
Yeah, and Jim, he did a lot of work, because we talked about, he said, let me look at the old drawings. And, and so he pulled those out and we were able to use them at the Community Connection luncheon. And people, if they want to take a hard look, they could, but it was like visual evidence. Yes, we were K-six and now we're K-four, but we literally are still two classrooms short in every building. Even though we had K-six in the building. The math worked out.
I, I like the thought of recording that, so.
I'm not sure if I like the thought of it, but I will do it. So that's strategic plan. That's been the big thing. Last month I reported, you know, a, a heavy increase in academic scores and achievement. Very happy about that. Probably will report next month on, on some information that we received that's in Barwood currently about report cards, school report cards, so. Can't talk about it publicly yet, or I'll be in trouble.
But he can smile a really big.
Wow.
Yeah.
I like that hint.
Lots of improvements, you know, and continuing on a pathway to be, be the best school around.
I like it. All right, let's move on to the two thousand twenty-five fall count.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually gonna put this up on the display. Only if I'm not, I don't see, uh, oh, my fault. I went to the wrong spot. Okay, I think this is the one. This is the one that's easiest to read. It, it's got, I won't make it too big, I hope. That's about as big as I can make it. You can see it's got all of our schools on the left and it has totals. So there's Sonoma, Beetle, Waddles, middle school, high school, totals over here. But generally speaking, at the bottom, we have two thousand seven hundred ninety-one student headcount. And then last year for the spring, we were at two seven six five. And then we were in the fall, twelve less than two seven nine one, so we were sitting at two seven nine, two seven seven nine. So we're up, which is great. Now, I report to you every month, you know, at first I thought the number's gonna be a lot higher. They're not quite as, as high as I had hoped, but when it comes down to the FTE count that really matters, and then to get our actual foundation allowance, they do a blended FTE, so they take this number, as you can see it, two seven four nine point two three, FTE count. And then you blend that with last spring, that gives you a count where we are thirty-two higher than budget. That's a good number. And so this year, we're getting ten thousand fifty kids, ten thousand dollars and fifty per child. And that puts us at about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand more than we expected, budget wise. So, great news. Last year, if you remember, we were a little bit less than budget and we were a little disappointed. And so the Budget Committee, as well as the Board, were much more conservative on estimating our student count. We went lower than our spring count was last year so that we could do that. So I really appreciate that and it, it worked out for us. We did not uncapped school choice. The school choice remained the same. We believe that the increase was from in district move-ins, and so we're really happy about that. I've been very steadfast on school choice and release students. We have the caveat for both, that we don't have to accept people, I'm sorry, students with discipline, and we did not. We do not accept students with discipline, which would be out of school suspensions in their backgrounds. You can hang your hat on that because that's something that I made sure happened pretty steadfast. That's what we heard during the bond as well, that we needed to, you know, be conscientious about school choice.
Interesting. I just had a conversation with a parent in the last week, and they actually asked about that and was able to reaffirm what you just said. Anything further on the fall count? All right, let's move on to policy updates. Start with the student handbook updates, appendix one.
Okay. I think it's this one. I'm gonna push the button. If I'm wrong, I apologize. All right, I'll leave it up there though. All right, so the very first thing is student handbook addition. And this was, these are, this is law. This is not something that we really have a choice on. But we have to give a sexual harassment and sexual assault information guide to parents and students and guardians. True and felt the best way to do this and easiest way was to put it in the student handbook. And so I would like to add to the student handbook this guide, that it, something that the, the law said we have that had to have in is basically helps a student, a parent, or a guardian understand if their child was sexually harassed or sexually assaulted. It gives information. It gives, I don't say examples, but it, it gives specifics as to what that might look like. Because a lot of times, we'll get people that will call and say words like sexual harassment, sexual assault, and this will give a better definition so that we can all be, be on the same page. Okay? So that's one thing I would like the Board to approve tonight. Typically, the Board doesn't, doesn't approve individual handbook type things, but because this is a law, I want that to happen. Board policy updates, I'm gonna probably talk a little bit like an engineer. The first one was a holdover from our last meeting where we approved policies. This was back in August. The policy five four oh four, Title One, and parent engagement. And so I noticed that when I looked at that policy, we had to put in specific information as a district as to how we're gonna implement this. And so I asked Mrs. Williams, and she said, well, I think the best way to do that is to go to our district curriculum council and basically ask them, A, what are we doing? And B, what's best practice? And so, for example, under implementation, the district will take the following action. So share this pa, policy annually at, at parent meetings, nights in the falls. Get feedback from parents from. feedback from parents from annual perception surveys and conversation of family conferences, which are held twice a year. So, to get parents actively involved, we know that the back to school meeting is really hard, like, that's, it's where everybody's at, but, and we can get the information to them, but actually using the perception surveys, which we do every year, and then on top of that, conversations with parents who have kids in title one at conferences is a best practice way for us to get information face to face. So, that's an example of, of implementation. I can go through all of these, there's, there is, I think, five different areas that the, the team went through, I think, pretty good. Um, let's just say, okay, provide material, materials and training to help parents work with their children to improve academic achievement, and use technology to foster parent and family engagement, and they thought, oh, we can use our school newsletters that can align the curriculum to give parents support for things like English, math, and science. Now, for us, we use the actual language of school, right, amplify mid-school math and science kits, but those are the specifics versus just the, we'll give more information of what we're doing in class during, in newsletters. Sounds simple. Um, provide support with student management systems, like videos at fall and spring conferences might be helpful. So you, you as a parent, and I said you as a parent, you're all parents in the room, how to use Power School specifically. Okay? So those are some examples that I put in there. Want to hear some more, or you're good? Good? Okay, I don't want, I don't want to talk for a while. I, I really trust the team, I mean, they, they, this is what we're actually doing and then what the best practice is gonna be. Um, policy thirty-one-one-eight, uh, title nine, sexual harassment, uh, they changed, and I apologize, but they changed the word fondling and replaced it with criminal sexual conduct, and then also in the policy, they, they define criminal sexual conduct. I think what happened, Trune had some sort of a case where fondling was not, um, defined clearly, and so they said, okay, that's probably not the best term, let's, let's use criminal sexual conduct, which is a term defined in law. So, does that make sense? I can make this bigger so you can see where, where I'm coming from on it, if you wanna actually see the mark change. Shoot. See, fondling crossed out, criminal sexual conduct, and then there's the definition. All right, the next one, um, forty-one-one-three, Michigan Earned Sick Time Act, which you may have heard about, it's a change in how we do sick time. Um, and really the only change is they changed the name of a form at the bottom of this. This is what the policy committee does, kinda, kinda fun. You look for red?
Riveting.
That's the change right there, F to F dash one. Next one.
That was riveting.
It's a great committee.
Form, four-one-one-three, F one. So the form that was in there was changed, the title was changed right there, so that's the, that's the next one. Now, the real change is they added a new checklist, this is all, all red is all brand new. So this helps us and employees know when they're eligible to use the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act, you know, times when you can use it, who are eligible, uh, family members, all the stuff you really need to know is in this checklist, so we're gonna add this to the policy.
So that's referencing the F one?
That's, see, this is form F two.
F two.
F one is the form you would fill out if, um, no, I'm sorry, F one is the form that we give to people when they get hired, to notify them that they have these rights. Okay?
So no example of F one in there, though?
Yep. So the student handbook edition and the board policy updates, those are the things I would like for you to approve. Okay? You with me? The other things that we discussed at the policy meeting, and this was, I think, the, the reason we called the meeting in the first place, artificial intelligence. Um, we went through quite a bit of information, things that we had as a district that were sort of at the grassroots, beginning stages, draft stages. Um, we took a look at Michigan Virtual, we took a look at AI for Education, we didn't try to create stuff, but we said, what are the next steps? And so the expectations from the committee is that we will have, um, to the board, uh, drafts of the principles and beliefs as a district of a, artificial intelligence, that's one, that we will have a working draft of AI guidelines for the district, so that, that students, teachers can follow, parents can, can understand. And then the third thing that we thought was critically important is that we have an infographic that is consistent, DK twelve, that teachers and kids can identify when they can use AI in the classroom, because we felt like it's not clear to kids when they can and can't use AI, and we wanna make sure that we as adults make it clear to kids, you can use AI in this situation, you can't use it in this situation. So almost on a assignment by assignment case, when kids can and can't use AI. So sometimes it makes sense to use it, sometimes, you know, it's, it doesn't make sense to use it, and every once in a while, it's about how to use it. So there's probably three different things on the infographic.
And was that the infographic that you, that we talked about, like the green, yellow, red?
So green, you can use it, red, you can't use it, and then yellow is, you, you, it's, it's like, it's part of the assignment potentially? Well, I, I believe, if I'm not, if I think about that conversation, we do, I think one of our beliefs as a district is we've gotta teach kids how to use AI. We can't just ignore that it's there. Teach them how to use it well, and proper use of things like that. It's, it's no different than we used to teach how to cite work, you know, in a paper, it's very similar, and I think Laura a hundred percent agree with that, that that's the work, kinda work that we really want kids to, to know. E- employers are expecting people to use AI now, it's not like it's one of those things where it's not an expected skill. So that, that's the, kind of, the committee said, Rob, this is what we expect, and so our team will work on that and bring it back to the board, um, so that you, we have more defined guidelines, beliefs, as well as, you know, the when you can and can't use. Um, we did review discipline policies, I, I noticed in when I reviewed them, in the past, we used to have, and this was based on, on repeat offenders, in the past, we used to have, within our discipline policies, it would say, we are gonna, we, we use progressive discipline. I noticed in the new Trune policy and the new Trune handbook, it does not use the word progressive discipline, progressive meaning this happens, then it gets a little bit more severe, then a little bit more severe, and a little bit more severe, and that may be the way we do it in practice for the most part, but the committee, I believe, felt like we need to take a hard look at adding that back in, either to our handbook and or to our policies, that we will follow, um, progressive discipline practices. Does that make sense? And, I don't know.
When is that gonna get added back in then?
That was my question.
Oh, we'd, we would typically do it as we end it, end it into a new school year. So as we go through the, um, handbook process, as well as the policy process next spring, I think that would be a good timeline. That's my opinion. I, I think if we ask the principals, that's pretty much what we do in practice anyway, but putting it in words, um, might make it more clear to, let's say, students, parents, that you can't do the same thing over and over again and get the same result.
Gotcha. Questions on policy updates? All right, let's move on to food service spend down plan.
Okay, Mrs. Obermeyer's gonna talk about that.
Um, this is a every year thing, we have too much in food service, I think most people, especially with the free meals, most schools do, um, in the state of Michigan. Uh, this year, we haven't even got the official notice actually, but I submitted the FID, um, we have seven hundred thousand in excess fund balance, um, and unfortunately, that can only be used on food service stuff, fortunately and unfortunately. A couple of, of the things, John and I have sat down, um, Harper Creek, and, or the high school and middle school ovens, he made a meal last, um, board meeting night, actually with, using the new ovens, that was around ninety-seven thousand, um, Jim and his team have worked hard at working with John also on getting everything installed, uh, properly. Uh, the next step, we kinda took a step back because, um, we weren't sure if we were gonna continue the free meals or not, and we were seeing if we would need to fund that, or if, um, we could move forward. Fortunately, we can move forward with some of the other things that we have planned. Um, John got quotes on elementary ovens, the same, he wanted to get it at the middle school and high school, make sure they were what they were wanting, now they're getting them in the elementary, so they don't have to deliver food to the elementaries. Um, that's around sixty-seven thousand.
Each?
Total.
Oh.
Yep. Um, HRI servery, in the high school, they updated like that pizza, I don't know if you guys have been in there recently, but there's like a pizza corner, basically. Um, they are going to also do designs for the rest of the, the servery design, and even some seating, I just said, get all the ideas and we can, we can figure out from there. Um, John and his team are going around to all the, all the schools to see if, um, any and all smallwares can be replaced, any pots and pans, any, that's not gonna add up to a lot, but they're gonna have what they need. Um, also, we're purchasing four uniforms for each employee. Um, as always, this is always, um, a major spend down plan, is the quality and variety of food. I think you guys already know, um, our, our kids eat pretty, pretty darn well with Chef, Chef Ruben App, um, but he's always trying to look for different ideas, getting kids to try different things, um, they had different tastings last week, um, he actually called them, was like, come, come see, they made different, um, spices, um, or dips, and they used, they had tater tots for the less adventurous, and what was it, plant-based chicken nuggets for some of the others, and that, that's just an example, but they had the kids trying different ones, and a couple of kids came out, uh, when we were standing there saying, this was so good, and so John, uh, John's actually gonna put that on every day for them to have it, you know, on a sandwich or, um, different things like that. Um, another idea is in the spring, we want an outside area for the students at the high school, they currently go outside, but they don't really have a dedicated place, so we're gonna look at, um, getting designs for like sales, and we can't literally add to the square footage of anything, but we can, um, do landscaping and things where it's a clear place for them to eat and enjoy. Um, I know you guys know about the food truck, that was used about six or seven times this year. Um, another thing, we did hire, um, if you guys remember, Chef Matt, who, to help, uh, John, and we are pu- pushing hard for an increase and, um, for him to just feel empowered to use that food truck at all the, it's just fun for the, for the kids to eat out of the food truck and, um, kindergarten and, you know, kindergarten, sign up, what, what, what is it called? They had, you know, they were passing out popsicles and things like that, it's just something fun. Um, I'm actually currently meeting with principals, um, on their budgets, and one of the other things I'm doing is seeing if they need anything, um, Beetle Lake, we got some microwaves and some mini fridges and, you know, things like that, that are used for catering, and, um, just different, different ideas with that. The other thing I wanted to just point out is, yes, we have this excess fund balance, but we really are spending more on food. Um, I just was doing the math when you guys were talking, our lunch and breakfast, the breakfast is up, um, twenty-four percent in cost, and our lunches are up, like to actually make the meals are up twenty percent.
Is that due to inflation, or is that due to quality?
Both.
Okay.
Yep. And so we are working on the spend down plan, like I said, it is pretty much everywhere, but we're trying to get creative and get the schools what they need to continue being the best food service around.
That's. We'll bring those high dollar amounts to the board.
Yes.
For approval, we don't have the, we have to do bids, obviously, for the big amounts.
Yep.
They're not quite done yet.
Not too long ago, I saw, uh, a post by a high school, um, home ec, or home economics, um, teacher needing donations of pans and stuff like that, is that something that this could go towards, or?
So this couldn't, but the stuff that we use potentially could, so I'll, uh, maybe we can talk afterward.
Yeah, I think I have a screenshot of it.
All right, anything further on food service spend down plan? If not, we'll go to new hire.
Okay, um, now I kinda read it, uh, Mr. Abraham is right here in front of you, and I'm, I'm really, it's my pleasure to recommend Jane Abraham as the new assistant superintendent of instruction, uh, to replace Laura after her long tenure. Um, I, I think Jane will do a wonderful job coming in and, and taking our, our, our district, you know, from where we're at, and I think we're in a really nice spot, and pushing us again to the, to the next thing, you know? Laura did so much work getting us to this, this spot, and so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate we have someone that can be here to help us take the next steps. So, I am strongly recommending Jane, I could talk through his resume and all the different things, he's currently at Caledonia, um, you know, his middle school where he currently works, um, they are a, uh, solution tree, uh, award school, so, and, which, which is a big deal, it really is. That means that their testing, that their achievement rates are at that seventy, eighty, eighty percent rates that Laura was talking about where we need to get to. Um, so he's done some work at a, at the building level, and now he's ready to take the next challenge at a, at a, at a district level. So, makes very exciting.
Uh, move on to superintendent mid-year review.
Okay, this is kinda weird. So, as part of, as part of the evaluation process, there has to be a mid-year review, um, by, from the Board of Education, and it's, I know it's hard, um, for volunteers to come up with and, what, what are we gonna do? And so I talked to Mr. Best specifically, and I said, uh, Bo, um, how about I, I, I draft something up that, you know, you can review, and so we did that, I think Mr. Smith actually reviewed it as well, and this is just a matter of, I gave it to the board to say, what do you think? This is what I did with the principals personally, and, and typically it was, um, a couple of goals, like, my goals are the strategic plan, like, that's the goals, in my opinion. That's where, where, what I need to aspire towards is achieving our strategic plan. I said, okay, well, specifically, the one goal is we're looking at student achievement, having written curriculum, the scope and sequence completed, uh, professional development of staff, and celebrating student success, for all things under student achievement, and how are we doing towards those goals? Um, a- a- as, as one, I talked a little bit about the progress, the second goal is, is all about our future, and looking at this project, where I spent most of my time, I should say most of my time, where I, I spent significant time this year going through a process, and really the goal is a successful camp, or, I won't say the word campaign, a successful vote, um, in, in August would be like, if I met the goal or not. So.
Board members, is there anything else that you guys would like to see in this mid-year progress report? Mr. Smith, did you have any comment?
It's a formality, and really, I really like the evaluation, I don't say evaluation, the year and evaluation piece where we all sit down together as a board, and we talk through really specific things within that evaluation document, that's helpful to me, really helpful. You know, we can ta- take a look at progress, I, I get it, I'm hopefully giving you enough information on a week to week, day to day, or week to week, month to month, year to year basis, where you see progress towards the strategic plan in general. Um, this is just something that is required, in my opinion.
Well, my only comment, I, I mean, I would agree, your focus on the strategic plan, I mean, we've talked about that, that we've had strategic plan documents in years past that were, looked really nice hanging on the wall, and we didn't do a lot with them, so the fact that you made that your, that should be your plan, is the district strategic plan, and the, and the, how you've woven that into the, our, our monthly board meetings and have your, your staff focused on it, I think is, is the, those are the things we should be focusing on as we go forward.
Agreed. All right, nothing further, we're gonna move on to comments from the audience, no more comments. Uh, at this time, we are gonna call for a motion to go in closed session, before we do that, um, our action items will proceed after that, so if you choose to wait, great, if not, we understand. Um, and so Madam Secretary, please call the motion to go into closed session.
Chair calls for a motion at the Harper Creek Board of Education, meet in closed session, under section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight B for attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion?
I would like to bring in Laura, Ginger, Jim, and Jim into the meeting so they can hear, uh, you know, about the thirty-one-one funding.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, he's hearing his scene on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward, I vote yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Best?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
All right, we are now in closed session.
All right, we're back in open session. We're going to move on to action item A, policy updates. Student handbook update, appendix one and number two, true and policy updates. Do we have separate motions for those?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the student handbook update, appendix one.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the student handbook update adding appendix one, sexual harassment and sexual assault information guide as required by law, reviewed by the policy committee.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you for that. And the second policy update, true and policy updates.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the Truenet policy updates fifty four oh four, title one, and parent engagement thirty one eighteen, title nine, sexual harassment forty one thirteen, Michigan earned sick time act. Forty one thirteen dash F dash one, Michigan earned sick time act form and forty one thirteen F two, Michigan earned sick time act leave request checklist reviewed by the policy committee.
So moved.
We've moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, action item B thirty one AA funding, we are going to table for now, but we'll move past that and go to action item C, new hire.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the following new hire. Jane Abraham, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, eighty one thousand three hundred and eight prorated Master of Education and Education Leadership, Grand Valley State University, Bachelor of Science, Grand Valley State University.
So moved.
Been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Officially, congratulations and welcome. Harper Creek, Jane, we look forward to seeing great things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last action item, superintendent mid-year review.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the superintendent mid-year review for Mr. Ridgeway for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year as discussed and reviewed.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Do we have discussion?
Other than thanks for putting that together, Rob, and we have the best superintendent in the area, so, well done.
Thanks. It's awkward.
It always is. All right, any further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, items for the next meeting. I did forget to share that I did finish doing donuts with Rob at the five schools and the bus garage here in the last month, and I will say we got a lot of productive feedback from the different buildings on the on the bond proposal, so really thought that was good. So any other comments for the next meeting? As usual, I reach out by email and text before the meeting if you have anything. Otherwise, meeting adjourned at seven forty three PM. Good night.